Okay, mic's on. Pastor Mark did not come? Tynor? Okay, Tynor, you may have to do the number. He did not make it? You ready? Please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge to the U.S. and Texas flag. Tynor?
Let us pray. Our Father, thank you for another day. We gather today to do the good work for the citizens of New Acys County. Help us to help our community, make wise decisions, and as always, be with our citizens, those in nursing homes, hospitals, the homeless. Give us all strength, and always, Lord, help us to do your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Please join in the pledge. The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas. One state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you very much, Tynor. Well, good morning. Today is August the 8th. We're meeting in the New Acys County Commissioners' Courtroom in the Acys County Courthouse. I'd like to certify that all members of the court are present and that we have a quorum. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes of July the 25th, please. Some move? Thank you. A motion, second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, poll, same sign.
Since I wasn't here, Judge, I'm going to abstain from voting on those.
On the minutes? Okay, that's fine. Let the record show, it was four. Abstention, is it? No. Okay, four no. All right. United Way kickoff.
Judge, we have Stephanie Jordan here from the United Way if she wants to come forward.
Morning!
And I'll read the resolution.
Very good.
Whereas the United Way of the Coastal Bend improves lives by mobilizing the carrying power of the community through B, Brooks, Duval, Jimwells, Livock, Kennedy, Clayburg, New Acys, and San Patricio Counties, whereas its purpose is to advance the common good and create better opportunities for all citizens by focusing on education, financial stability and health through fundraising and investments in programs addressing the needs of our community. Whereas the United Way of the Coastal Bend ensures that 100% of the funds generated annually remain local, and 201 New Acys County employees successfully contributed $5,635 in pledges and gifts, whereas these dollars are invested in critical needs to change the Coastal Bend for good. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of New Acys County, Texas, does hereby recognize the kickoff of the 2018 United Way of the Coastal Bend fundraising campaign and hereby encourages citizens and county employees to participate in assisting this important, broad-based organization.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Aye, poll, same sign. Good morning!
Good morning. How are you all?
Welcome. Glad to see you.
Thank you so much for having me. My purpose here is simply to say thank you to the county employees. They've been very supportive over the years. We're hoping that support continues. Obviously, last year proved to be quite a challenging year, so that support was even more vital. United Way focuses on three areas: education, financial stability, and health. And all of the money that we raise here stays here. Last year, we were able to help 130,000 people in nine counties. This year, we've added Refugio County to our group, so we now have 10 counties. And we just are very appreciative of the county and of the help that we get here, and we're hoping this year is successful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
For all your hard work.
Thank you.
Thanks to our employees who contribute to. Thank you very much. Public comments reserved for items not posted on the agenda. Thank you. Okay, Joe Gonzalez. Good morning, Joseph.
Commissioners, good morning. First of all, I want to thank you and thank the court for letting us voice our concerns here today. Commissioner Vaughn, I want to welcome you to the court. My name is Joe Gonzalez. I'm the president of the NCSOA. I'm a sergeant in the Training Division, and I've worked here in New Acys County for over 10 years. I understand you guys have a very difficult job this year with the budget. I just want to remind this court that the sheriff's office currently sits with nearly 30 vacancies today, and the jail is at a 97% capacity. We appreciate the steps this court has taken in the past to bring our pay up, but we are still behind on pay, and this makes bringing the officers to our family very hard. The biggest tool that we have is our retirement. Every cadet, every class is told, we may not be competitive with pay, but stick it out. We have a great retirement. Now that we gather in this room today to talk about the Strider broke the camel's back, and that's going to be our retirement, I urge this court during your budget talks not to take our retirement away. The NCSOA is against our retirement being messed with, and our membership, the five constable precincts, and the sheriff's office is against our retirement being messed with during budget talks. I want to remind this court that we have a collective bargaining agreement in place. We would love, we would have loved for this court to reach out to us through our labor relations clause in our contract. This would have definitely, you know, with our retirement being messed with, this is going to definitely change our benefits and compensation plan that we have through our collective bargaining agreement. And like I said, we do have a labor relations clause in our contract that we can definitely sit down with you guys and talk about anything that it is that the court would like to talk to about our benefits and compensation plan, and our door is always open. Under my watch, we have always tried our best to work side by side with this court. You know, when an issue comes up, we try to meet with you guys individually and to avoid any problems, and I think I've done a pretty good job under my watch. I think we've only filed one grievance. If you compare us to the fire department or the police department, you know, they're in the double digits on grievances. Judge Neil, we've only done one under my watch. I don't want to waste too much of your time, but I just want you guys to know that the association and the five constable precincts that we're against our retirement being messed with, and I understand that you guys have a very hard time with that, with this upcoming budget, but that's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joseph. Willoughby?
Judge, Commissioners?
Morning!
Before it was Mr. Gonzalez's watch, part of it was mine. I'm a past vice president of the union, and I'd just like to tell you, I think it's abhorrent that this was proposed to take away part of our retirement. I've been here 16 years. 16 years of loyal service to you, and now I hear one event, one event causes all of this? I find that hard to believe driving around the backside of this county. I find it extremely hard to believe when I see growth in London. I see economic expansion at plants like Lyondale and Celine's. I see major pipeline construction all over the county. I see all kinds of housing expansion all over the place, and we have one event and one thing in one small part of the county that takes away all this and causes all this heartache. And yet, our first response is to punish people who work for you? Any basic HR class, your employees are your best and biggest resource, and you choose to punish those? You choose to punish your resources, your best assets, by taking away something that we all have expected and worked for? How is that? In hard times, I own a business as well, just like most of you do. I own a business here in the county. My family's been in business in this business for over 100 years, and I'm proud to say that. But in hard times, we've learned to do without luxuries. We've learned to do without this and learned to do without that. Maybe it's time we tightened our belts. Maybe it's time we looked at things like the fairgrounds and the millions of dollars spent out there. Maybe it's time to tighten that up. Maybe it's time we looked at other things, but definitely not the employees' benefits. That's a huge mistake. Your employees are loyal to you and will do just about anything you ask of us, but don't do this. Please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Morning. I'm Lieutenant Humberto Hinojosa. I've got 20-plus years with the sheriff's office. Just want to comment that I disprove of our retirement being messed with. When the hurricane hit last year, a lot of people evacuated out of the city, and your employees, especially the jail employees and patrol stayed here and took care to ensure that the county stayed safe. Keep that in mind when you're making your decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hinojosa. Mr., is it David? D-A-V-I-D? Is that correct? Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. How are you all doing? I am recently retired.
Go to the other mic. You won't have to bend over.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Actually, that was a good height for me. I recently retired from the sheriff's department after 28 years and 10 months of service. It was pretty rough, 28 years. You know, the only thing I really had going for me was not a big paycheck, but that thought of that, hey, just keep going a little bit more, a little bit more, and that retirement was really something that kept me in the game for so long. I know a lot of people that are still with the department, and they're looking at that same goal, and it was really hard for me to do almost 29 years. I don't fathom how anybody else can stay there longer and do such a hard job. I would really like for y'all to just reconsider as much as possible and seek other avenues of curbing expenditures or whatever it is you need to do, but the retirement, that's one of the very few things that the department can offer people to stay. And thank you for your time. That's pretty much all.
Thank you for your comments. Is it? I'm not sure. Is this Gutierrez? Or? Thank you. I'm sorry. I apologize for... Olivia, how's that? Okay. Thank you, Olivia.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Corporal Olivia Gutierrez, and I just wanted to say that I'm against taking away from our retirement. Most of us, this is not just a job for me personally, but for most of us, it's not a job, it's a career. So the thought that if we just hang in there, we can eventually retire with a good retirement that keeps us going. I mean, we're already overworked, understaffed. Most of us come in hurt, sick, you know, working seven days straight, but we do it because, A, we love the job, and B, there's always that that goal in the future of being able to retire from here. So I just wanted to say thank you for listening, and that was...
Thank you for your comments. Is it Brown? B-R-O-W-N? Thank you.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
My name is Corporal Zachary Brown. I've been with the sheriff's office for just three years. I just want to say I'm just against the retirement deduction, just like Corporal Gutierrez said, that most of us are overworked and we are understaffed, but we do take this as a career, not just a job, coming to do our job every day, and we appreciate what y'all do every day, and we just want to say thank you. I just hope you consider that.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment? Any other public comment for items not posted on the agenda? Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. When I go to the consent agenda, consent agenda items will be voted on by one vote, unless a member of the public or a member of the court asks that that item be pulled. We're going to be tabling item O, in case you're wondering, but I'll call for public comment on 3A through 3X. 3A through 3X, any public comment? See none? Commissioners comment on 3A through 3X? I'm going to move to table O. Is there a motion to table O? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Poll, same. Any other, any other comments on the consent agenda by the court?
Item M?
M?
M is in... Michael?
Okay. Any other comments on the court?
What about 4D?
Pardon me?
Will there be public comment on agenda item 4D?
We're not there.
We're not there yet? We're on the consent agenda items. Thank you. All right. Item 3A through 3X, we've tabled O. We're going to pull M for the commissioner. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Poll, same sign. John, I am. I am.
Who's on this? Edward?
Edward, are you in charge of paving?
Not paving, but Sabatour Park drainage improvement. So this Monday, this Monday, feels like a Monday. It's been a Monday every day this week.
This week it has.
Yes. For this money, it's all grant money? We're not putting any in?
The department is. We're going to put in 20% of the total cost or 25% of the total cost. It's a FEMA project that, the problem with that area in Sabatour is that it inundates, and then it dries up, and then it inundates again. It's a real nice area, but with these last storms, it's pushed the project back, and this is from the actual flooding in 2014, 2015 that this project, we're finishing it up.
Will this work have any impact on the most recent drain, or rain that we saw there at the park when we toured? What was it, last month?
The only thing that we're doing, Commissioner, is trying to protect that roadway, because essentially what happens is it's so low that it floods across, and it doesn't serve as a drainage ditch, so to speak. It just floods across it, so it's just a low area, but we need to make sure, because it's starting to wash away. This, this structure was built way before, and I've been here 30 years, and so it's been built in the 1950s, 1940s. If you look at it, it's just roadway with concrete just slabbed on the sides, and it finally, it was built really well, but it's just finally given up the base material, so it's kind of digs in and it circulates, and we're going to have to replace some of those pipes in there.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. You want to make the motion, John?
Motion to approve.
Is your second, Joe? You got it? All in favor? Aye. Poll, same sign. Regular agenda. Today, we're going to get a presentation by our bond counsel, and we're going to be in a position to start talking about what we might refinance. Come on up, Noe. Thank you. It's good to see you.
I already have one of those, right? Same thing? Same thing? That one, right?
Good morning, Mayor. I mean, Judge, member of the Commissioners' Court.
No more paper. No, how are you doing, man?
How are you, sir?
Good.
Basically, this is a follow-up to what we prepared for you at a workshop, I believe, or maybe at a meeting early in the month, and if you have any questions on this, please don't hesitate to call me or interrupt me at any time. Basically, what we're doing here, if you look at page two, get into the weeds of it, on the very far right-hand column, you'll find a yellow column there that starts with a number in the black, about $1,008,000. And what that is, is your, literally your savings account and the interest and sinking fund account. And as we have projected to make payments of all of your debt, which stands right now at about $120 million in principal, we've pretty much decided that we can't, the judge asked us to come up with a plan, and the plan was how we can preserve that savings account. Give you a perspective, the county is rated AA+ by Standard &amp; Poor's and AA by Moody's. So a standard and poor's is just a notch from the AAA category, and when analysts review, credit analysts review your credit, one of the, one of the factors they look very closely at is your fund balances, not only in the general fund, but an interest and sinking fund. And we're talking specifically about the interest and sinking fund. So in this particular case, if you were to do nothing in regards to your current debt structure, basically, that column would jump into the negative in '19 by virtue of the fact that over the past years, you have actually used excess collections of this tax revenue coupled with using savings account in this particular fund so that you can make the payments. So as you go further down the road in year 2020, '21, '22, then that fund balance actually gets pretty significant. So the only way you can offset that is either by making transfers into the fund to make the payments either this year, '19 coming up, or '20 and beyond. And so what we're trying to do is just literally do about $13 million worth of a refunding, restructuring, in order to offset that payment structure. The payment structure, it's a, if you look at graph, the graph on page three, you'll see this little red line that goes from 2018 all the way up to 2041. And literally, at about 10 years, you're paying your debt at about 70% of principal. So think of you having a mortgage, and instead of paying out on 30 years, you're paying it in 15 years. So what we're looking at is an approach to keep you flexible with this particular fund. This has nothing to do with the general fund, it has to do just the debt service fund. So when you look at your debt, we will look at bonds that were issued back in 2010, and we will restructure, we will take out of that bond paramount that is outstanding and take out about $13,909,000 to give you that flexibility and your amortization schedule. And that's on page four. On page four, you'll see the fifth column from left to right, the blue, the blue shaded column, and you'll see how we're picking principal payments in the front end and tossing them to the back within the same accorded structure that you did back in 2010. We're not extending debt. We're just, within that same room, provide you the ability to pick and toss. And then the column prior to that, the column prior to that shows you what your current payments are on the debt, and there's some yellow shaded rows there. What those yellow shaded rows are, basically, is future ability to restructure that if you need to, in very insignificant amounts, like $2, $3 million, in case you were to get into a problem like this. So what we try to make, make you aware is the fact that you want to be flexible. If you can afford to do a little restructuring, like in this particular case we're trying to do, then you'll be able to preserve your fund balance. If you look at the far right column, the same yellow column that I showed you on page two, on page four, we are very hopeful that you will not only preserve the little you have there, $1,008,000, but over time, as property values grow, tax rate remains the same, that fund balance should grow too, that when we get to 2025 and beyond, you won't have that kind of cumulative deficit in this particular fund. So if you were to choose to proceed with this item, basically giving you this plan of finance today, we will come back to you on or about September the 12th and sign the bond documents to do this restructuring. So I'll stop there, and questions you may have?
Anyone have any questions? Noe? Anyone have any questions? I certainly appreciate the hard work you all have done with our staff and you all have done to do this. This is something I certainly favor.
So just...
Yes?
Making sure. So, and I've got to pull up my email that Kristen answered me on this, because I sent this to her yesterday, and so she's, her answer to me was, because my question was, would this save us money in this year's budget? And the answer was, in order to have enough funds to pay the debt service requirements necessary to, one, approve this refunding to reduce the principal amount, two, raise taxes for the debt service fund, and three, fund the deficit from the general fund balance. So in doing this, will we be able to see some savings? If we do this, will we be able to see some savings in this year's budget?
That is correct.
And that would be general fund?
Interest and sinking fund.
Debt service fund. Right. But that still ties to the effective tax rate. If it reduces, if it reduces the debt service part of it, then that could help us reduce, or could help us get to the effective tax rate, if that's what the court chooses to do.
We've got to remember that the truth and taxation controls the, how we control the calculation effective rate and the maximum rollback rate, and your debt service rate is a separate calculation, because the state gives you the opportunity to set the rate enough to pay for your requirements. If we set the entire rate to meet the maximum requirements, it'd be .50 instead of the .4 we're at. So to do that, we're able to use those little bit of savings, and we don't need that rate, and that can be moved to the M&amp;O.
I think what your answer is, yes, right?
Slightly, depending on how the, because remember, the effective rate for the debt service is a lot lower than the .4. So we would still be manipulating the M&amp;O rate and the debt service rate to get the rate where we need to be. And it could be a plus, it could be a minus, depending on how the rates work out.
And right now, our, you said our debt service rate's .4?
.04, yes.
Point what?
.04.
Four cents.
Okay. .04. So in theory, and I know this isn't the right number, and I'm not trying to throw a number out, but in theory, if this lowered our debt service rate to .03, in theory, and I know that's not the right number, but if it lowered that rate, then potentially, that would help us on the M&amp;O side, well, not on the M&amp;O side, it would help us with the overall effective tax rate.
Well, in the...
Or tax rate.
Construction of what we work with, with Noe and my staff and Kristen's staff, we will not be able to lower the debt service rate lower than 4.
Even if we do this?
Because if we have it at 4 cents per valuation, it'll bring in right at $12 million, which is what we need for requirements for our debt service.
If I may, if you look at page two, second column from right to left, in 2018, your rate was 4.4 cents?
Hang on, I'm trying to catch up.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
If you look at page four, the same column, you can just not have to flip, just pick your fingers there, the tax rate remains the same. So what we're doing is, within that tax rate, we're using that tax rate as the benchmark. We don't want to bust through it, we don't want to lower it. What we're trying to do is minimize the, the impact of having to do this restructuring. So it's a very small transaction, but at the end of the day, the objective is to preserve the tax rate and preserve the savings account in this particular fund. If you were to do nothing, you would have to compensate this particular fund with $2 million. If you look at page two, you'll see the fourth column from right to left, today, as in the past three or four years, the INS fund has been providing, you could say, a subsidy, because we have had a lot of fortune in that particular fund to have as much as, I think, $4 million at one time in the debt service fund. And so as you go about using that fund to offset the tax rate impact, what we're bringing up to you is, A, you keep the practice, and you'll end up in a little bit of trouble in '19, and then it only gets greater. So what we're trying to do is fix your payment structure, not to necessarily save you money, but to give you the flexibility that you, that you need.
More cushion. Right. And some more cushion potentially within the fund.
Noe, like you said on page two, if you look at the right top, where we have the beginning fund balance of the debt service at 3.2 to our projected ending of 1.8, because we kept the rate at the .04 last year, we were required to use $1.6 million of our debt service fund balance to be able to maintain those rates. Without using the fund balance, then our debt service rate would have been higher.
So basically, this is just providing us some more cushion from, so that we don't have to supplement...
Without, yeah.
And to dig into our reserves in that fund.
Correct. Or have to fund it through the general fund.
That's right.
And within the tax rate, too.
Makes sense. Okay.
Really, this doesn't really affect anything we have, our budget or reserve, it's just strictly a debt.
It's a debt fund. Just like you have your operating budget, you have an operating debt service fund, and this is what we're trying to heal or cure.
So if we do nothing, we have to put $2 million in? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Not quite $2 million. If we do nothing, because of the race difference, the slight difference, it won't be $2 million, but at least be $500,000 or more. At least.
This is our best choice.
Right. This is definitely our best choice. Or we have to raise tax on the debt service. That's our only choices.
Any other questions? Good discussion. I'll entertain a motion to approve the required... Well, what is the motion here? To authorize bond counsel?
And financial advisor.
And financial advisor?
Proceed with the plan of finance presented to you.
Thank you very much. That's exactly what I was going to say. Thank you. That's my motion, and do I have a second? I have a second? Any other discussion? Public comment? See none? See none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. Noe, thank you again, you guys do great work for us, and we appreciate this.
Hello, Robert, I said hello.
And by the way, Dale, thanks to your staff, there's a lot of work that goes into this, so thank you very, very much. Good morning, Mr. Superintendent. How are you?
Good morning.
Come in, come up, good to see you again.
See you all. Well, first of all, thank you very much for putting this on the agenda, and I appreciate Edward and Elsa's, and y'all's attorneys' work on putting this together, the students of Robstown ISD and the FFA program, we're going to really appreciate that. We'll put some large fans in there as soon as y'all approve this, and we'll take it to our board on Monday and get that taken care of.
What kind of fans?
Very large fans. That was the brand name, we apologize for that.
That was fine, that was real. Those were big fans.
Yes, they are.
Move approval.
Wait, wait.
Couple items.
Okay.
Excited, Judge.
Well, I need a second to have discussion.
Just a second, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner?
Now.
Okay, thank you, Judge.
Now, okay.
All right, pretty much, we're good with everything, the only issue is that we're requiring to have fire insurance, which is understandable. We have Elsa working on that, and I let her explain what happened with that.
I'm right behind you.
In a nutshell, what it is, what you're looking at is the rent amount, instead of it being a dollar, it's going to be whatever the insurance amount is for fire, and that's where Elsa comes in, and she'll explain that.
Okay. We requested a quote for fire only, however, our current carrier for our property that does our fire policy, or property policy, that, if you all remember, was combined as with the wind. And so in providing as a quote, the quote came in at a thousand five hundred and five dollars and seventy cents, and the insurance company, because our property is combined fire and wind, indicated that they could not separate it out for a fire policy only on the show barn. So when they provided the premium, they indicated that eleven point five percent, which is a hundred and seventy-three dollars and sixteen cents, is the fire portion, and the one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents is the wind part. And that is the policy, the insurance policy premiums that we were able to get from Borden Insurance, and that's the numbers we have to work with at this point, unless the court wants to go in a different direction.
So we're going to, we're going to need to make up a difference?
Correct. Our recommendation is, the school is not responsible for any wind or anything like that, so, you know, the only reason we're getting the fires, because the, we're going to get into the cold season, they're going to have heaters running, if some animal knocks over a heater, we want to be protected, we want to be taken care of. But we can understand the reticence to pay for any wind insurance, because they're not responsible for the wind.
And, Mr. Gonzalez, I mean, this is really the only costs, or Elsa, this is the only costs we're really kind of taking on, as the county would be this difference in the wind, which was thirteen, thirty-two fifty-four, is that the right number?
Yes.
So, Judge and Court, that's what we're asking for, a facility that we haven't used in years, that's going to be brought new life in partnership with Robstown ISD, they're going to handle everything else, even those big old fans they're going to throw in, and that's what we're going to ask. So I make a motion, Judge, that we take on that cost of one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-four cents to make up the difference, to cover the wind and fire policy that was put in place by Borden.
Would you accept that as amendment to my motion?
I'm sorry.
Where does the money come from, I guess is just the question?
Yeah.
There's got to be a funding source.
We have the fairgrounds, I mean, the show barn has a billing function of the general fund, so the funding will come from the general fund.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Liability, Robstown taking on the liability? Are we additional insured? We're additional insured. Well, you know, I kind of have a problem with this, we're having a problem with the budget this year, and so what we're doing is we're adding on. I would think that Robstown would pay the fire, and y'all are going to use it, we're not using, it's just been sitting there.
Fire, we have no problem with.
Okay, so what is it you're wanting us to pay?
Fire is a hundred and seventy-three.
You're wanting us to pay the wind? Do we have wind on there now?
No.
So?
Why do you have to add wind?
Because it's bundled, Elsa, let me...
Can you not go get a separate fire policy?
Wind, oh.
Because our properties right now are bundled, I cannot get one from our provider. I have made a request to another insurance company, and I'm waiting to get that. I don't know what the price will come in at, but it will be at, the fire will be at a higher premium, because the reason we're getting a lower cost on our fire right now, and wind right now, is because all our other properties are with Borden Insurance. And so we would just be bundling one more building into that, so just know...
It might give you a break, doesn't it, since you've got all that insurance?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and they indicated that we would be adding this to our property schedule, to all our other properties. At this point, I don't know what the other insurance company is going to, the cost is going to be, I am, I'd be waiting for that fire, a separate fire premium from another company, so.
Okay, me to ask Dale, you said you have, this is going to be from the general account, but do you have budget money already for the show barn?
Very small amount, yes, because it's...
You say very small amount, what's the...
Well, it's very small, because it's been, we haven't been using it for a while, we had a small company there, or a different government out there for a while.
It was, we were actually renting it to a gymnastics group, and they...
Okay, but what's very small?
We pulled the utilities and stuff from it, so...
Yeah, what's very small, I mean, do we have enough money paid for insurance?
Three thousand dollars, three or four thousand dollars a year is what we've been spending on it.
We can't pay from that one, instead of drawing from the general account?
That isn't a general account.
Oh, no, but it's reserved, it's a set...
Well, it's not reserved, because we're still paying some small utilities. We're still paying some small expense.
And we're still paying all that.
So we're going to get rid of all that with this agreement, they are...
We're going to be saving money by doing this partnership.
Trying to cover it.
We're going to, we're saving money.
Let me just go through this, Commissioner, they're going to renovate the bathrooms, they're going to demolish the toilets and urinals and install some new ones, they're going to do the washes, the sinks, ensure the restrooms are ADA compliant, they're going to install proper lighting, they're going to upgrade the stables to current FFA standards, they're going to install security cameras, they're going to install the fans, they're going to power wash the building inside and outside, and they're going to paint the exterior of the building, that's all, that's what we're getting for all.
How valuable is this property? I mean, you just give it to them?
And we just donate it to them, the building, let them worry about it?
You don't want to donate an asset, gosh, you could sell an asset, we're short money and we want to donate? I'm against that.
Commissioners, that's also part of our emergency plan, that's a staging area for us, so we want to keep...
Keep the building.
Keep the property.
Well, I mean, if they're going to do all that, I mean, I don't see why we can't pay with the insurance or the...
Especially since we have it, and we're going to be having a savings on the impact of our budget, so we're paying, but we're saving a lot more than what we're going to pay thirteen thirty-two a year, one thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars.
And the one thing that's not in this agreement is we're also shifting that personnel that was maintaining that to the airport.
To the airport, yeah.
And that's a savings of six thousand, I believe, Kristen?
Yes, we priced out, you know, what a janitorial service would be for the airport, because the airport doesn't currently have one, but once the new terminal's up and running, and it was around six thousand dollars.
So like, here's my, I mean, I'm all for this thing, I think it's a great deal, and I'm doing some of these in my precinct, but I'm, but my, but what I'm doing is, I'm putting everything on who takes it over, so I know it's not a lot of money, I just don't know if I want to start a precedent of, you know, like, deal with London, I mean, we're putting it all on these people, you know, we're putting everything on it, and that's kind of the perimeter of which I'm going, so it's not the amount of money, it's just, I don't, if we start down this path, I'm just curious, I'm just concerned we'll start down this path.
How much, what is the total package that Robstown ISD is putting in to fix up the facility? Javier, do you have that?
About a hundred and twenty-five thousand bucks, and let's, just different pieces, and I realize we need to treat all taxpayers the same. You know, the pieces this gentleman mentioned, and pieces that was set over there, we're going to pay, we're going to pay the fire, which is a hundred and seventy-some odd dollars, because it's bundled with your wind, you're going to have the difference in the wind, which is about a thousand bucks. But as I understand, there were three thousand dollars was already being spent, and you're going to redirect six thousand dollars, so you're actually coming out ahead, because you're spending one, but you're saving, but you have nine to start out with, so I think you're coming out ahead, and your facility is going to be in a lot better shape than what it is today. And so it's, you know, I think, I think the company, the county is saving money through the process.
We still have, of course, like on most standard contracts, we have, was it ninety-day period, Lotta, is that correct? Ninety-day period, prior written notice on this contract, so, I mean, not that we anticipate problems, but, you know, if there ever gets to a point where we need to separate our ways, we can do that, and we're, like Mr. Gonzalez said, we're going to have a facility that has been vastly improved by money that's not coming out of our pocket. I agree, I mean, any dollar amount is a concern, thirteen hundred, I would, I would say is a reasonable investment to put in, considering at least a hundred thousand dollars in total value, plus the cost of the savings, plus for moving the personnel from that location, be able to cover the airport once it's up and running. I think it's a win-win for everyone, and it, you know, they're not, you know, they're putting up a lot, they're putting up a lot, it was just, I think there was, there was a lot of back and forth, just so you know, as there always is with the county attorney's office, and the attorneys for Robstown ISD, and so that was kind of the one sticking point, that there were some conversations on, as far as, well, they don't own the property, so can they, or should they be required to get a policy on that part? And because we couldn't break it up, and we just voted, what, a couple of months ago, maybe, on the, on our insurance, on property insurance, we couldn't go and change it now, and this conversation's been going on for a few months, but, I mean...
John, I think it's a great deal, I'm even willing to, it's not my precinct, but I'm even willing to throw in some of my precinct funds to help, you know, to do it, because I just, I want to make sure that, you know, because I'm going to be asking folks going forward, they're going to have to pay the nickel too, and so I'm, I think this is a great deal, I think you're a hundred percent correct, I'm just trying to make sure we don't start something that we don't want to start, so I'm, whatever, I mean, I agree with you, you're, it's a net savings to us, and so we could certainly justify it with that as well, so, I don't know.
I'm sure the commissioner paid for it if he wanted, but, you know, the thing here is, you know, they're doing all of this, and we're going to reuse the building too, I mean, it's, I understand, I just heard somebody saying, we're going to use this building, we're going to continue using it, so they're doing all those repairs, I mean, where, I don't know why we are...
The area that you all need and...
No, but I'm just saying, I mean, thirteen hundred dollars shouldn't be an issue versus a hundred and something dollars you're going to do, and renovate it and keep it going, and so, you know.
So what are we going to use the building for? We haven't been using it, have we?
We're using it on the map of the building.
What are you using it for?
On the map there, you'll see that we handed out...
It's storage for the library, Commissioner.
Okay.
But what we're looking at is the parking lot in total, and also the building whenever there's an emergency, we need to, that used to actually be our evacuation shelter, from where we would evacuate a long time ago, when the judge first came in, until we moved to the new location.
Can be used for that, it's going to be upgraded, so...
Correct, but the parking lot, this last storm, we had as many trucks as you can count from AEP, they staged there, so they would stack through there, and the agreement allows for that for in the future.
Well, I completely support the project, I think it's great that y'all are going to be using it, you know, Cal and Tulos will use it for years, and I just think it's great, but I'm with Brent on this, I mean, with my company, we lease a lot of buildings, and we, everything's on us, you know, so you are getting a great benefit from this, to have the building, you would have to go out and spend a whole lot more money than that to build one, which is great, you're using it. So I just think we've got to be careful, because I am one that I think we need to pay for what we can, because our general budget has really been touched the last two years, and so every little bit that we can save, and that may not sound a lot, but every penny counts, it adds up when you keep doing this, so I'm willing to do what you guys want to do, but I, but I agree with Brent with that, I think we're kind of setting a precedent here for future, for things that are going to happen, I think if we're going to lease these out, they need to be paid for by whoever's leasing them.
And this is only this one year, even though it's a five-year agreement, they're going to have to pay, but we can make those arrangements when we go back out for insurance, just for fire, so that, I mean, it's just an odd thing.
It can be adjusted, yeah.
So it can be adjusted.
No, because I agree, we, I mean, we don't want to set a precedent, but when you talk about this kind of investment, I mean, that's one thing, if they were coming in and say, give us thirteen hundred dollars and we'll fix up the building ourselves, that's one thing, but that's not what they're saying, that's not what they're doing, they're putting in a big investment, it's going to improve the community, and, I mean, based on these numbers, Dale, Kristen, I mean, we're, we're going to be in a positive, we're not going to be in a negative, based on savings and based on resources we're already putting, is that correct? Yes?
When you say, I'm sorry, when you say we're going to be in the positive?
Well, that, we're not, I mean, we're paying something, but the overall cost that we're going to be saving is a lot greater than what we're putting in thirteen hundred, isn't that correct? From the three thousand that Dale said?
Right, well, the three thousand is in the general fund, and the janitorial costs that Edward's referring to is actually in Fund Sixteen, so it's in a different fund, but it's, it's still savings that would not have to come out of Fund Sixteen, yes.
So basically, it's, it's, we're spending three or four thousand dollars a year, how much are we spending that's going to go away, and how much is going to come back, just, that's the number, I mean, I'm trying to, I'm just trying to get there on this, because...
It has to do, if we're currently paying the utilities, I think we just shut the part of the utilities off, so I don't know the exact number for that, before it was eight or nine thousand, now it's total two or three thousand dollars. So if they are now paying the utilities, that leaves two thousand dollars savings, because we don't have to pay the utilities.
And are we paying any insurance on that building, right?
Right now, no.
Nothing?
Which...
We don't even have liability on the property?
No. Interesting, too, I'm not sure...
Self-insured.
Wow.
And are we self-insured, that?
They're self-insured.
Because we basically, I guess, didn't care if that blew away, I mean, is that what we're saying? No, I mean, I'm not trying to be funny, kind of funny, but, you know, I mean, is that, is it just because the building was in such a state of disrepair that we didn't, I'm just trying to figure it out, I mean...
It's just that the building wasn't being used, and it didn't have a purpose for the county's use currently, so it was decided that it would be removed from the insurance to reduce the premium for the insurance properties, since we didn't have any real purpose on it.
Okay, so we've got utilities, and we've got, you said something else, janitorial, and so we're spending four thousand dollars a month on that building?
Not a month, though, annual.
Annual. Oh, I'm sorry, we're spending four thousand a year?
Yes.
And we're talking about thirteen hundred a year?
Yes.
Not thirteen hundred a year, that's this one time.
Just one year.
This one year. Next year, we can have the fire insurance, the whole thing is, it's bundled right now as part of our policy, so we'll exclude that next year, get another quote. So they'll be paying the whole amount.
I'm good, let's go. Move, accept.
We have a motion, a second amended, it's John, you through, or still more?
Done, Your Honor.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, thank you. Number three, we're going to have to table...
Through all this, that, this is a great deal, so let me go back to that, because this is a great job, John, because this is a great use of a facility that we're not using, and we appreciate working with Robstown, so we need, we need, we had to talk through that little glib there, but I don't want to overshadow, this is a really awesome partnership, and great job, John Mottoz, and great job, John Mottoz, and great job, Robstown, thank you very much. Well, I want to thank, I know we've got to move forward on the agenda, but I want to thank Mr. Gonzalez, you know, he was appointed there interim, and now there's a new superintendent that's been selected for full-time, and so I want to thank Mr. Gonzalez, as he will be leaving his tenure at the end of this month, so it was a very short-term gig, but he went in, and this was a priority for him, and so I want to thank him and his partnership for helping get this done in this short period of time, so thank you.
We can't forget Lotta and her crew.
Of course, Lotta, the attorneys did so much work.
Thank you, Lotta.
Thank you all so much, Lotta and Belinda.
Thank you, Belinda.
Belinda did a lot of work.
Thank you, Edward, thank you.
We got a call this morning.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes, this morning.
This morning, from the appraisal district. There seems to be an error in some of their calculations, they're going to recalculate some of the oil and gas revenue in the property, which may, which may affect the amount of money we have under new construction, which may affect the calculation of the effective tax rate and the rollback rate. So we're going to have to table three, until we get that information, they promised, they have told us we would get that today or tomorrow, so by Monday, we should be able to discuss this more in more detail. So I'm going to have to move to table number three, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Ms. Shavon, I think you want to discuss number four.
I want to table four.
All right, I'll second that, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, number five. Okay, Tyner?
Judge, in the court, what you have in front of you is, I think Judge Neal and Commissioner Chesney recently went out to look at this building in Port Aransas on Alister, and it was determined that this building needs to be torn down. So as a formality, the, the lease that we have, it's a dollar a year with Port Aransas, just as a formality, we need to give them notice that the lease is going to be terminated.
Just real quickly, a couple comments on this. This is a building that we've owned in, in Port Aransas, we, the county, has owned in Port Aransas for many years, we've had an agreement with, similar to the agreement with Robstown, that we have, that this was a, kind of an old dilapidated building, it used to be the jail out there, I believe, in fact, and the, Port Aransas has maintained it, kept it up, done all those things with it. Unfortunately, for the community, because it was used as their computer center and some other things, it was destroyed pretty badly in the hurricane, and therefore needs to be, it's not worth re, it's just not worth redoing. So what we'll, we'll do, we're moving towards doing, with, with the court's permission, obviously, will be to tear that building down and eventually look to sell that property. Laura's given me some opinions on how we do that, and that is a very, quite honestly, a very valuable piece of property, right on the main street in Alister, of Alister, in Port Aransas, so I don't...
How much time do they have to move out, I mean?
They're not in.
They're not in at all?
It's, yeah, they haven't used it since the hurricane, we just kind of, this is one of those deals where, I went and looked at it, and then judge got around to it, because it was, you know, wasn't a high priority, we're, so we're just, now we're in the process of terminating the lease, they know it, they're on board with it, they get it, and then we're going to turn, we're going to sell it, so, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, discussion, questions? Commissioner in the corner?
No.
No? You tell him, say aye.
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 All right, we'll go to number six.
We may want to wait till the judge, oh, the judge is back.
That's right.
Judge, did you want to discuss number six on the Naismith engineering?
Well, I think we have furnished each member of the court our settlement agreement. We mediated this last Monday, Monday, and, and I'd like to thank everybody involved, both parties involved. We ended up with a settlement amount of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars that will be paid by the E and O carrier for Naismith and Hanson Professional. We started out at a much lower number, and I think the team that was there agreed that the hundred and eighty thousand dollars was a fair settlement. They, we've approved this, I think we're approving, asking the court to approve it, but we, we've gotten that far, and I would like to recommend and make a motion that we accept the settlement of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the E and O carrier for the engineers involved, and...
And authorize you to sign a settlement.
And sign the various documents.
Second?
Thank you very much. Is there, are there any comments? See none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. Thank you all very much. Okay, does that take care of, no, seven is a different deal, isn't it?
Yes, that's a different...
Okay, go ahead.
This is a, a case that we have, and basically, we had asked the court, or we're asking the court to allow us to agree to pay attorney's fees in this particular case of fifteen thousand dollars.
You recommending this?
Yes. Now, now, granted, this is part of a settlement amount, it's not like the county's coming up with the money, it's just how to distribute that amount.
Okay, well, I'll make that motion, if I can get a second.
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Aye, post same sign, thank you, Laura. Grants?
Judge, a couple other items on business, can we move it up on the agenda, on the regular agenda?
What's that?
Number D, can we just move that one up to the regular agenda?
What are you saying?
Item number D.
What do you want it to be?
Other items, I don't know what other business, but that's a really item, it's an agenda item, right?
It's where it is.
I know what, I know that's where you put it, but I'm asking you, we can move it up to the regular agenda. I'd like to move, we move it up to the regular agenda.
Was it here?
Because the sheriff, if I was here, everybody would...
He's doing the presentation, I don't...
Sheriff's doing the presentation, he's not here.
I know, the sheriff's here.
Are you doing it? Sheriff's not here.
Okay, well, I thought you were here for the sheriff.
Purchasing, I'm sorry, grants?
Good morning. First item we have on the grants, under grants, is discuss and consider an interlocal agreement. This is with the, between the county and the city of Corpus Christi, this is for the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, which we call the JAG, and this is for our formula grant, not Commissioner Jag, Jag, Justice Assistance Grant. And this is, this is something we do every year, the city gets an allocation in coordination with the county, we're allocated a certain amount, and the, the agreement is to split that amount fifty-fifty between the county and the city, so this is a good partnership for us. The total amount this year is a hundred and sixty-four thousand eighty-four, and our half will be eighty-two thousand forty-two, and this is split between, well, there's a little three percent set aside for IT, and then the rest of it is split between the sheriff's office and the DA's office, and they've respectively given us their little budgets. Sheriff usually uses it for training, DA usually uses it for their drug interdiction or drug prosecutor, this year, they're going to probably get a vehicle for that person, so...
Okay.
There's no match, and so we recommend approval.
I have a motion?
Second.
I have a second. You know, all in favor? Aye, post same sign, all right, number two?
Number two is discuss and consider execution of the First Amendment for the SAVNS, Savens Maintenance Agreement. This is through, or with, the Office of Attorney General, and this is for the Victim Notification Services program that we do here. This contract is for, this is a reimbursement program, the, the Office of Attorney General gives us money for the money that we spend on maintaining the system, and the contract is actually with apparatus that the county has, but this is just for the funds for the, for the Attorney General, from the Attorney General. We can't, we actually came to court back in March with this contract, this is, this amendment is just an extension, so there's no cash, there's no, the amount remains the same, it's the same amount of money, but it's just a longer period of time.
Okay, I need a motion.
Motion approved.
Thank you, is there a second? I got my second here, all in favor? Aye, post same sign, thank you. Thank you, Roxy, good work. Percy?
The item before you is an agreement with Bridges Specialty for the Nuasis County Airport Waterline Extension. This was awarded to Bridges Specialty, and what you, we have here is the agreement with all the insurances and the bonds, and everything's ready to go. Recommend approval.
Need a motion?
On my end.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. See no comment, all in favor? Aye, post same sign, thank you very much. Where's the sheriff?
I texted, sir, but if you want me to answer the question...
No, I want the sheriff to make the report. Sheriff has been asked to make the report, we'll ask him to start. You think he's on the way?
I do believe so, sir.
Okay, okay.
As a matter of fact, there he is.
There he is, right there. Great timing. A D is a report from the Nuasis County Sheriff on the 287G program to Nuasis County Commissioners' This is a report directly from the sheriff to the court. There will be no questions asked by members of the public of the sheriff. This is not a public forum, this is a report from one elected official to the other. We will have, at the end of the report, at the end of the discussion, we will have time for public comment on the report. Sheriff, good morning, glad to see you here, sir, thank you for coming on the report.
Good morning, Court. Sheriff Jim Caitlin, here this morning to respond to concerns of the 287G program, which we've initiated in the, in the jail. I brought with me the chief of jail operations, and I would like to ask him to come up here and address any issues the court may have with regard to cost and funding of the 287G, if that's acceptable.
Go on.
Chief Arnold?
Morning, Chief.
Morning, gentlemen and lady.
The question was raised by members of the court, what the cost of this program was to the Sheriff's Department, additional cost or total cost, and how we were implementing the program, and I'm not going to speak for the court, they've got their own questions. But if you could, to answer my question, if you could go over the cost associated with the 287G program for the Nuasis County Sheriff's Department, and then I'll let the commissioners take off, because I don't know what they want to ask.
Judge, it has had zero effect on our budget. Zero.
All right. It's my understanding that you had to train two people, or have trained two people, in the implementation of the program. Can you explain how they were trained and what they do, please?
After entering in with the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Service concerning the 287G program, two officers were selected. They did spend four weeks in South Carolina at ICE training facility. At that point, the only thing that we furnished was their salary, just like we would if they attended training here in Nuasis County, we still have to pay them their salary. Everything else was covered by the federal government.
So these two people are being paid as regular Sheriff's Department employees?
Yes, sir.
Do they have dual purpose? Do they do more than one job, or what do they do?
The, their duties under the 287G program are just an additional duty that was assigned to these individuals, their primary responsibility is corrections officer.
Do you have any additional employees that you have put on in patrol or somewhere else to enforce or carry out the 287G program?
No, sir.
None? So your employees that are out doing patrol, explain to me how they react to a potential person who might fall under the 287G program?
Well, sir, I'm, I'm the jail chief.
Well, who could help answer that?
So, so I, I'm, I'm not exactly...
Maybe your boss can.
Oh, whoops, excuse me, sir. Sheriff, the microphone. In response to your question, Judge, it has no impact. Senate Bill Four, I'm sure the court is well aware, Senate Bill Four, and affirmed by the, by the appellate court was upheld and enacted, and I, as sheriff, cannot restrict my employees for asking about someone's citizenship, status in the United States. We do not arrest in the field for illegal immigration. I have discussed that, I have told numerous times, different people, that we do not do immigration enforcement in the field. My 287G program is strictly in the jail for immigration detainers, in which the federal government has a detainer on a citizen, not a citizen, but an illegal entrant in this country, and they pick them up within forty-eight hours after they have disposed of whatever case brought them to the jail. But please understand, nobody comes into the jail charged with an immigration violation.
Okay.
So patrol is not involved. There may be questioning in the field, just like I discussed yesterday with the chief of police, there may be questioning in the field in reference to citizenship when you stop a vehicle and there's small children, and the driver or the, one of the people in the car cannot, cannot adequately explain why and who this child belongs to, or who this female maybe in the car belongs to, but it has nothing to do on the immigration side other than human trafficking.
I don't have any other questions, folks, it's up to you all. Any other questions, the sheriff?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Judge, thank you, Sheriff, for coming on this issue, and obviously, it's important. Does the sheriff take off?
He knows, he's right here.
Okay, Sheriff, I'm sorry.
He's there, he's talking to you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, I'm back.
You know, this issue is obviously important, it's, I mean, has national implications, it impacts us here locally, you and your officers see it and feel it, and obviously, it's a, it's a concern, you know, we hear of big gangs, MS-13 and others, who are coming over and who are terrorizing, killing innocent people, that's obviously a concern, and no, that's an important part of what you do, and probably one of the biggest priorities for you and your, and your jail. So when you have these, these individuals that have been arrested for violations, they come in, and so your employees that have been trained, they run them through, I guess, is it a database, or how does that work?
Yes, sir.
To kind of verify?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You said that other individuals that come in don't get arrested for, necessarily for immigration, but you said it's because out of concerns of human trafficking or other issues that they may be locked up for, or, no? Explain that part that you mentioned, I'm sorry.
The questioning, it leads to, under Senate Bill Four, they have the right to ask about their immigration status, and through a series of questions and answers, are the children, are the women, are the whoever may be with these individuals, is it part of a human trafficking organization, which is very prevalent, and, and groups have come in here and testified to this court about human tra, human trafficking issues? And I've worked with the representative Todd Hunter very closely on these issues and these concerns, which certainly are very difficult to, to make the case. But this questioning doesn't lead to any arrest. Let me say it one more time, we do not arrest people in the field for violations of, of immigration status. We may arrest somebody for failing to identify all citizens or non-citizens. If they don't identify, they're arrested, they're brought to the jail under that specific charge. We're not going to let anybody go that may have committed an infraction that we don't know who they are. That's just basic police work.
And I know in some of the reading, some of the discussions that we've seen in the media, and, and some of the items that you've talked about in the past, namely, last year, where's, I guess there's different levels of 287G, is that correct? Level like one, level two, level three?
Yes.
And it goes from minor infractions to severe, I guess hardcore felony charges? Is that basically right?
There, there are multiple levels, however, that isn't the choice of the sheriff's office. ICE makes the determination of what level of, in their priorities are. We don't, we just inform them that we have someone that, that's coming up in the database. They decide whether that individual gets removed or, or released, as far as, or placed on a detainer.
Now, you may not have this today, or, unless you all know off the top of your head, but, I mean, how many total have been arrested and, and that have you have dealt with specifically regarding 287G?
Since, since it's been in, we've placed two detainers.
Two detainer, okay. And do you know what the outcomes were on those, or?
They, they were turned over to, well, their cases haven't been disposed of yet, they're state cases, so as to whether the, the detainer's been placed, and then once their cases are disposed of, then they'll be notified, ICE will be notified for, for pickup.
And, let's see, so going back, you know, we, we had questions last year when we were kind of dealing with this issue, and, and you, Sheriff, you, you tried to answer them, you weren't really sure, because you hadn't really gotten into the program, I think you all just started officially, was it the beginning of this year, is that correct? Or when's it last year that you all signed up?
We've been in operation about a month. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this year, 2018. And the question always was the budget, and you, you answered some of the questions that the judge had. So these employees that you have, these two trained employees, there's nothing that takes away from doing all their other duties?
No.
Because, is it just because there's so few that are coming in that, that are a concern or dealing with this 287G?
They have a structure as to what they do as far as doing the immigration checks, it doesn't, they're, they're not running every person that walks through the door, you know, it might come back as where they're identified, and there might be something in, that comes up in NCIC that says this person may be a possible illegal entrant, then they will check that individual. The rest of the time, they are performing corrections duties.
We have been doing this forever, since I've been sheriff, but it was done by a phone call without us having access to the database. Now, under the 287G program, they've just allowed us to have access into a database, that's all. And so when we're doing NCIC checks, TCI checks, and making sure that when we release somebody from the county jail, that they are authorized to be released, that we didn't release a wanted felon out of the jail who could be a harm to the citizens of this community, this has expedited the process that we've used in the past. And ICE is very protective of this, this program, they, you know, four weeks' worth of training, that's, that's pretty extensive training to make sure that they understand That's pretty extensive training to make sure that they understand and know their responsibilities. But my opting into this only applies to the jail. It applies, has nothing to do on the highway. It has nothing to do with our civil operations, our warrant operations, or any other operations in the jail, and we've been doing it since day one. There's something that has put a fear and a concern, because we said 287G, a federal program. We've got people now working in federal programs, the Drug Enforcement Administration. I have people working there with the FBI on the Safe Streets Initiative. There's people working there. There's people working for the Marshal Service in helping us find wanted felons out of Nuasis County, and we have a task force which gives us that force multiplier, that they have a bunch of people and a lot of equipment that we'd never be able to afford to find these people. So it's just one more tool that has helped us in the performance of our jobs and our responsibility to the citizens of Nuasis County.
So you're saying it's only on the jail, and you could go further if you wanted, or that's the limit of this program?
Yes, some people, you know, you've heard out in Arizona, the Sheriff Joe Arapayo actually took his enforcement out on the highway, and he, in fact, became an immigration enforcement, part of an immigration enforcement team. That's not happening here, and I don't see it happening, but the world is ever-changing. But right now, we're, you know, border security is the number one issue in the United States, protecting the border. And we're doing one small, tiny part by, if immigration is wanting an individual, that we know they're wanted, and we give them a chance to come pick them up before we release them, releasing them from the Nuasis County Jail.
And I know Chief Markle can't speak for himself. He's not here, but, so what was the difference in the statements he's made as far as dealing with this 287G compared to arrests that are being made or not being made by CCPD officers? Does that have any impact at all?
Chief Markle and I had a great discussion yesterday evening, after, you know, this, knowing that I was going to testify today. And one of the things, he said, "Your position and my position hasn't changed." He said, "The only thing that makes you different from me is that you have a jail, and you're working this program in the jail. I don't. My people do." I said, "Do your people ask about immigration status?" He said, "All the time. All the time." That's part of police work, when they stop people. Who are you? Where are you from? And Senate Bill Four, of course, you know, we work under the provisions of law. Senate Bill Four said we couldn't do that, then certainly we wouldn't do that. Senate Bill Four. And we don't, and I know this court's been very concerned with seizures and some other issues about losing federal funding. We're doing what we can do to make sure that the grants that are issued to the various departments from the state and the federal government are not impacted, because we're not doing what the government has asked us to do. But again, it's just, we're doing one more small, tiny piece that is a part of a much larger puzzle.
And I'm going to wrap my part up here. You know, I thank you for clarifying this, because I think there's been a lot of questions about how this is working, that you're dealing with it only on the jail side. I have concerns, and I brought this up before, and not to put undue attention on him. He's a private man, but my grandfather, my dad's dad, we still have him. He's almost 91 years old. He's a pastor. He's served his country in World War II, and he's, his preference is Spanish. He speaks English and Spanish. He always speaks English to me, but as he gets older, I think he's kind of reverting back to his first language. There was a time, right when we were talking about 287G last year, that he got pulled over by CCPD. He had left church after preaching on a Sunday. He was going to meet some people, and he went and got pulled over for some minor violation or question. He didn't have his ID on him. As I said, his preference now is more Spanish. He can do English, but that's kind of what, even when he talks to me, he kind of mixes more that in than anything. My concern with all of this is that people can be profiled, and I think that's a very big concern here locally. You're not going to see immigrants who are necessarily going to be pulled over who have a Russian accent, or a French accent, or a German accent, who may be same violation as far as immigration status, as compared to someone who is a Spanish speaker from a Central or South American country. And so I think that that's one of the concerns here. Nothing happened, and of course, that was part of the discretion of the officer and after, I guess, verifying, but that could happen to, I think, of anyone in my precinct. And I know we can always play what ifs, and that's a very difficult game, and it may not be fair. But I worry because that could happen. And here locally, that's what our, we're predominantly Spanish-speaking people who, I don't think there's been much issues of profiling, and I appreciate the sheriff's office and other law enforcement for not doing that, that you've seen in other parts of the country. I think you all have been very sensitive to that, Sheriff. But I just worry that kind of what if, and that that's kind of where the focus is. So I'm just, I just wanted to share that story, because that's what kind of motivates me with my concerns. And with the constituency that I represent, that a lot of them are Spanish-speaking, preference or Spanish-speaking only.
Absolutely.
And so that's just kind of my concerns.
But for you to explain to your dad, 99.9% of every car that is stopped, we have no idea what race, what nationality, what political affiliation this person is. They're stopped for something secondary to profiling. But we profile. We do profile. When there is an armed robbery and a identification comes out on the suspect, you don't look for somebody who is not in that identification profile. You look for people in the profile. If it's a blue Ford, we're not going to stop other cars, other than blue Fords or cars that look like blue Fords. That is profiling. We don't do racial profiling, and in all my almost 50 years, I'm about three months shy of 50 years in law enforcement, but in all my 50 years, the car that I pulled over, I did not know the identity of that driver until I walked up to the car, and then it was on a specific violation. And you teach your officers that, here's what we do on that violation before I ever talk to you, so that we don't let attitudes change our enforcement. Going round circle on this, but if the only thing that we had was a suspicion that they're a violation, an illegal entrant into this country, they're not going to be arrested. This is live, it's being taped. We do not arrest for that violation. Now, while they're going through their process, they may call Border Patrol. They may call Immigration, because there's a concern that this person may fit a profile from MS-13 based upon some tattoos or some language that's used. Border Patrol may pick them up at the scene, but then Border Patrol or ICE is well aware of who they have picked up and taken out from our custody. So the basic underlying concern in all of this, who serve in the law enforcement community, is the safety and the well-concern of our community, and nothing more, nothing lesser.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Mr. Barris, if I may add something on that. That's a Senate Bill Four issue, that's not a 287G issue. 287G program is only in the jail with Nuasis County.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
We have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead, please.
When you mentioned those two people, I guess, that you're still detaining, right? You said to me, you're still detaining those two people?
Yes, because their state prosecution isn't finished.
How long have they been detained?
I don't know when they were, when their exact date that they were arrested. They're not being detained on the immigration hold. They're being detained because they have a state offense pending.
I thought you said you would call Immigration...
When they have disposed of the case.
Okay, so they're waiting for the case to be disposed. Once it's disposed, Immigration is called?
Yes, and they have 48 hours from that point to pick them up.
Pick them up, and then not their release.
Their release, yes, sir.
All right. The other question I have is on the, is on the question, and it's, sometimes when you stop somebody, you know, there's a police officer myself, I mean, I only ask for a driver's license. There might be some kids in the back, but I never, you know, sometimes I didn't question the kids in the back, but, you know, but I, when you start, actually, you're screening the person, when you start asking them about immigration, start asking about identity, about, you know, where, you know, are you a citizen, but, you know, I mean, that's, to me, actually doing a screening on the field, you know, but...
Sir, that's a political issue. That is not under our jurisdiction. That is a Senate Bill Four law that we can, that we cannot prevent our staff from asking that. We have no, whether we think it is right or not, is regardless of that. We, it's irrelevant. We have a law to uphold and abide by, just like all the laws. And Senate Bill Four is that one. We can't do that as administrators. Say, deputy so-and-so, you can't ask that question. Then we are breaking the law.
Well, you can't ask a question if you ask it to everybody, whether they're white, brown, black, whatever. And no, this is, this is where I have a problem.
Well, and you rightfully, sir.
Because I guarantee you that you don't ask that question very much of angle drivers or black drivers, because, and even though, you know, the African-Americans, it might not be from this country, but you know, I don't think you ask those questions very often on that.
Well, that's your belief, sir, and I can't change that.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, I'm just, I'm making sure, hopefully, this is just across the board, you know.
The Nuasis County Sheriff's Department has not had a history of racial profiling, and it will not change because of the 287G program.
I commend you guys for that. You know, Sheriff, I know Sheriff's always been concerned about that too, but, you know, we just don't want to get too far to left field, you know what I'm saying?
I totally understand, sir, but like I said, it's, we're sanctioned by the Senate Bill Four.
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you come back up as well? First off, I just want to thank you all for following the law, and I think that you have been unfairly criticized and talked about on Facebook. Some ugliness has been out there, lies, and I appreciate the fact that you've come to the court today to explain. It's obvious that you all have not abused it. In fact, you could probably go further, and you've not done that. But we are a country of laws, so you want to protect our county, and that's what you all are here for, and that's what this 287G is, and that's what it does. And so I want to thank you all for upholding the law.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your thoughtful words.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Thank you for keeping it safe.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you for keeping it safe.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, now, if you'll wait just a moment, we're going to ask for public comment, please, on this. You're welcome to come up and address the court under public comment.
I want to say thanks also for having this on the agenda and for enabling us, especially John Muddis. I really appreciated all of your questions, and we still have more questions. For us, this is really an issue about government transparency. It's not an issue about making allegations. It's not an issue about lies. It's not an issue about saying ugly things. It's that we want to know what's going on, and we want to know what the sheriff is doing, and we want to know what's going on in the county jail. When the chief of the jail says that only two people have been caught up in this program of 287G since it was implemented, by the way, just last month, we came a month ago asking questions about this, because nobody knew when it was implemented, right? The role of this, what's happening here is because we want answers and we want to know what's going on. And one of the things we want to know is, when you say that only two people have been...
Address the court.
When...
No, you're not addressing them, you're addressing the court.
All right, well, one thing that I'd like for you to ask, then, when you ask the chief of the jail, what are the crimes for which they are alleged to have committed that has brought them to the jail and then has caught them up into the 287G program? We want to know, did they get into the jail because of failure to identify, because of a Class B misdemeanor, a Class C misdemeanor? We want to know what's going on, because the fact of the matter is that those two people are our neighbors, and they are residents of the county. They are residents of the county, and what happens to them matters to us. The second thing that I want to say is, The Caller Times did this great article, an interview with Sheriff Kalin, talking about 287G, and in it, Mark Gonzalez, I have it here, right here, he says this, quote, "I think it's..." Mark Gonzalez, our DA, quote, "I think it's reckless and makes our community less safe cooperating with ICE," Gonzalez said in a text to The Caller Times, quote, "Victims of abuse are less likely to come forward." That is the issue here for us today. It's not just the financial repercussions, which, by the way, I am thrilled that this isn't costing the county any money. It's also about the fact that, one, it's about keeping our residents safe, right? I was just out there talking to the president of the Sheriff's Union, who came here to defend his pensions from county, from possible cuts, and he was saying that it's important to keep that trust with the community. But the problem with 287G and the problem with the program that...
Thank you for your comments.
Wait, let me, I'm very confused by what you're even saying.
Yeah, I am too.
He's come forward, he's told you it doesn't cost anything, he's indicated all those things, and you're going off onto an ICE tangent where, I'm just trying to, I mean, he's done what you've asked him to do, and it hadn't cost the county any money, which we were all concerned about, we all wanted to hear about that. So I don't, I'm not even sure what you're asking anymore.
Great. Thank you. Do I have a chance to respond?
Yeah, and what I'd like you to respond to is, have you gone to meet with the sheriff and their folks before coming here? Did you ask them to?
No, we didn't, because we asked them to come to one of our meetings last year, and he came, and then he told us things that he flatly went against a few months later. So we have no...
But why wouldn't you go meet with him? Is it because now the media's all here and we get this all put out in the press again? Or, because if you sincerely wanted to know what was going on, you could have had this, you could have gone to the sheriff, who I've always found very, and not just this sheriff, the past six sheriffs that I've always dealt with, if I had a question, I'd go to the sheriff and have a deal. But to me, being honest with you, and I've listened to this, and I've been amenable to this, and we've asked the sheriff for things, but to me, this just seems like you wanted to come and do all this in front of the media so you could keep perpetuating the issue in the media, which is fine. This is a free country, and that's great. But I have to ask why you didn't go sit down and talk to the sheriff if you really want to find out what's going on? Why? Because now you can't, you're asking us, and we don't, we have to ask him. So now we're in this weird scenario where you have to address the court, when in reality, if you'd have gone and met with the sheriff and asked to meet with the sheriff, you might have had all this information prior to coming here. So I'm trying to, I'm just trying to figure out where you guys are now, because he's answered the questions, but now we're spinning down another road. So maybe he's here, why don't you all go sit down and talk and ask him questions one-on-one and find out what he's doing, if you really are interested in that?
Okay, a few things. And thanks for that question.
Sure, I want you to be able to talk, so, yeah, absolutely.
Three things I want to answer to that. One, this is about trust, right? It's about trust in our elected officials, you all, and it's about trust in the sheriff, who is an elected official. So we want everybody to know what's happening. This isn't just for our sake. We want you all to know, because you control the budget of the county jail, right? And we want the people here to know, right? So it is about media attention, and it is about getting the word out about what's happening. So you're spot on, and I will freely admit that that's one of the big reasons.
So basically, on your spot on, so the media can report, nothing of significance is happening. So, okay, that's good, we got that out.
Well, I would disagree.
Well, but, okay, what would you disagree with? He just told you there's no budget implications, that's what we have.
Actually, he confessed to a lot of very fascinating things. So, one, not only had these two people been caught up, but also, he told a reporter who was here today that since March, 37 people have been caught up in a system that was not 287G, because it was only implemented a month ago. But, three, he also said, and the chief of the jail reiterated this, even though he doesn't go out on patrol, that they do not stop people and bring people into the jail for immigration offenses, but that they do call the Border Patrol and ask, and share that information with them.
And have for 40 years. You've got that part too, right? You heard him say that from day one? Didn't you hear that part?
Actually, what he said, no, he didn't say that they had been doing that.
We're not going to have an argument here.
He did say that. He said from day one, this is how things have gone.
She has to say what she has to say.
If I heard correctly, and I will freely admit that I'm wrong, what he said is that from day one that they've been cooperating with ICE in terms of detainers in the jail. He did not say that from on patrol.
What I heard him say was, no, what I heard him say was, this process has been on for years, and it used to be done by a phone call, now it's done a little differently because there's more technology, right?
Right, that's the detainers in the jail, Commissioner Chesney.
And that's also calling to check with other folks to see if anybody has an issue, right? I mean, maybe I misheard it too. I mean, I'm happy to do it. So I'm trying to figure out, like I said, what it is that you now think is wrong. I still don't understand what you think is wrong, not that you think is wrong, that we can prove that's wrong, because if somebody's not doing something right, then, but I'm not hearing it.
Yeah.
But go ahead.
I would say that the big thing is trust, the trust that's being broken between the immigrant community and police officers and law enforcement in general.
But that's, but that's like a big-picture issue, but...
Yeah, but it's a cost to the county.
No, no, how's it happening here? This is Nuasis County. I'm not here to help you guys promote your national agenda. I'm here to say, what are we doing wrong in Nuasis County? And I'm still waiting for you to answer that question. What have you heard today in Nuasis County, which is what we deal with, that's wrong, illegal, immoral, or is costing the, because I can't, I'm not hearing anything yet.
Yeah, I am hearing it, and I'm saying it over and over again, that what the sheriff has done and what he confessed to doing is that he's turning our law enforcement into a big part of the deportation machine that's basically catching our neighbors.
Wow, wow, wow.
You did not say that.
Seriously?
No, I'm not talking about just the two people. I'm also talking about the people being stopped on patrol.
You not want him to uphold the law?
Oh, my gosh.
That's the law.
Go to Senate, go to the...
Illegal means illegal.
Fix the law. Come on, how can, where?
Come on, Commissioner, let her talk.
I'm letting her talk. We're having a discussion. Commissioner, I'm having a discussion, and I don't agree with what she's saying, and I get to disagree. and I don't agree with what she's saying, and I get to disagree, you guys have thrown her softballs, you've thrown her softballs, and I'm throwing some harder balls, so I'm trying to figure out what she's finding.
What was it about?
And I get to talk too. You got to talk, and I get to ask her questions, and she's asking me questions, we're having a debate, that's-
I'm not being sarcastic to you, I mean, that's another-
I've been sarcastic about the whole thing.
Oh, there's some decorum that we should be following. She's coming up, okay, let me not be sarcastic, she's making accusations that she can't back up, that's factual, she's saying that this sheriff is catching us up in the deportation whatever, and I don't agree, so, I'm not being sarcastic, John, I'm being honest, what she's saying is not backed up by facts, that's what the problem is in this country, everybody wants to throw out all the hyperbole, I've asked her three times, and I haven't heard an answer that I'm comfortable with that backs up the facts when she makes this broad, overreaching statement, when he's come in and said, we've, it, it's in the jail only, we're not doing anything different on patrol, we're following Senate Bill Four, so, let me ask again with no sarcasm, but with great disdain, and I'm sorry if you don't like my disdain, but it pisses me off when people say stuff they can't back up, so let me ask you, and let me let you finish your question.
You just really need to calm down.
No, I don't need to calm down if I don't want to, I get to sit up here and do it the way I want.
You're an elected official, she is a guest in our courtroom, you should be at least giving her some respect, you don't have to agree with her, but you don't have to be smart ass about it.
I'm not, I'm being mad, I'm being mad, just like you're mad at me, you get to be mad at me, John, and I respect that, but I get to be mad.
Because you're, the way you're handling yourself.
John, with all due respect-
Commissioner, this is the only group you treat this way.
It is not the only group, if someone comes up here and says something I don't agree with, I haven't even, this is the first time I've even weighed in with this group, it's a shame that you won't let me talk and you don't like-
Guys, this is about a reputation, two of the sheriff's department, so there is a right to ask the question, his reputation has been trashed on Facebook, it's being trashed on the media right now, and it is, the issue is about lies, because that's what has been going on on Facebook, you said the issue's not about lies, you want transparency, he came up and he told you the truth about what's going on, but yet you don't accept the truth, you want to delve more into that, he is upholding the law, there is a law for illegal immigrants, he is upholding the law, and he is not abusing it at all, where you see it on other states that are doing way more than this, he is not doing that, he is trying to protect the citizens of this county, and you should be grateful that they put their lives every day they go out there to do this, and y'all should be grateful instead of trashing the sheriff's reputation, he has been an honorable man for many, many years, and served this county well, and that's what y'all are doing.
How, in what way have I trashed his reputation? What is the lie that I-
Look on Facebook, the things that y'all put on Facebook, I'm not going to go into it and repeat it, I'm not going to do it, I don't know who did it, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it was your group and part of it, so, but you're sitting here, you ask him to, he, he came before the court, he told you the truth, he said there's two in there, but you want to keep going on and on.
I do, I do, and I will freely confess that I do want to keep going on and on, because for me, when you stop somebody, because the sheriff's deputies, they have power, they have power, and when they stop somebody for a broken taillight, and all of a sudden, they want to know, who does this woman belong to, which by, who do these children belong to? Like Mariz and Commissioner Gonzalez said, right, are they asking that of everybody? Are they asking that of all families? Who do these children, who do these women belong to? I, I really don't think so, Commissioner Vaughn, but that's not, that's besides the point, the point that I'm trying to make is that these sheriff's deputies, they have a real power when they are on patrol, and when they stop people, and then they call the Border Patrol on them because they suspect that they're here illegally, that that is causing distrust in our community.
They have a right to call the Border Patrol.
They do have a right, but it is a discretion.
That's what he told y'all, and he did say they called the Border Patrol, there's a database they call, and if it looks like there's someone that's suspicious that there's something in that database, then he calls, as he has a right to do, do you want someone that's a criminal on the road, possible criminal on the road in the county? I don't think so.
Have you ever sped? Have you ever sped faster than the speed limit?
Yes, I have, and I've gotten stopped, and I've got a ticket.
Right, exactly, but that is a very, does that make you a criminal?
I, I'm not illegal in the United States, I'm legal, illegal means illegal, that means you're breaking the law, I'm not going to sit here and argue with this, because it's not gonna, there's not going to be a-
No, you're right.
There's not going to be, you and I are not going to agree on this at all, but I just think it's terrible that y'all come up here and trash his reputation, I just think it's awful that you're doing that, you always stay within the facts, and he's given you the facts.
I came before here, and I did not trash his reputation, I said nothing personal about the sheriff, what I said was that 287G means the Nuasis County is caught into this national deportation machine, that means that our neighbors are living in fear, that is all I said, that is not an attack on the sheriff, it is not an attack on his deputies, it is merely that that is what's happening, right? It may only be two people.
He's not abusing it.
Nor did I say he was abusing it, but what I am here to say is that I do not think that this is a program that is worth our time, and it is not, it is causing problems in the community, and I, I read you that quote from Mark Gonzalez, because what I want you to say is, what I, the point that I want to make, and this will be the last thing I say, is that maybe there is no financial cost that we can see, that they will come here and testify, right? But that does not mean that there is no cost to the 287G program, and that the cost may be invisible now, but it may be that soon we are going to see that the, actually, the result is distrust in our community and more dangerous communities because people are afraid.
It would be reckless not to uphold the law, he is upholding the law.
Okay, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Commissioners, Judge, just a short rebuttal, esteemed, I believe, is a counselor at law, arrest for failing D I D is not a Class C misdemeanor, it's a Class B, which is an arrestable offense, there is no body for broken taillights or any other thing which are Class C misdemeanors, ask the police department, I don't take them, they don't take them, if they tried to bring them in the door, they go right up the other door, we do not take Class C misdemeanors, our jail is absolutely full, and anytime I can get one out of there, that's good, when we said to the Caller Times, there's thirty-seven, there were thirty-seven arrested with, been put on detainers without the 287G program, and now there's two, I mean, that's, that's positive proof that, you know, I mean, the program hasn't changed, I'm sure it's going to grow some, but, and, we don't go out and arrest your neighbors, we pick up people all the time, but they're arrested, not because they're in this country legally or illegally, they're arrested because we received a call for a service at a particular residence, we go there, it's family abuse, and they are arrested, if they are illegal in this country, an illegal entrant, then, the next thing that happened is, they're not going home, ICE will come and pick them up, our community is safer because we don't walk away from this, and as long as I continue to serve as your sheriff, I will uphold the laws of this nation, of this state, and the ordinances that have been passed by this court, thank you very much, and I appreciate the chance to respond to the court.
Other public comment, please?
Hi, my name is Mimosa Thomas, I live in Commissioner Chesney's district, I would like to start just by thanking all the commissioners, and the judge, and the sheriff for having this hearing, we came, this is how democracy is supposed to work, we came to the Commissioners' Court meeting, we asked to have a public hearing where we could hear the sheriff answer some of these questions, it happened, now we're having public comment, and we're going back and forth, and as heightened as the emotions are on this issue, and as much as many of us may disagree, I think that this, like, the video recording of this meeting is an excellent example of what local government should look like, what local democracy should look like, and I'm really proud of Nuasis County today, and I especially want to thank Commissioner Mariz and Commissioner Gonzalez for helping to make this happen, that being said, I do want to address why we're doing, we wanted this in a public forum by transparency, we did meet with the sheriff last year in March, we had a huge meeting with the immigrant community and the sheriff, and he said that he was not interested in the 287G program, he said that he, that that was not, you know, something that the county was interested in doing, and then he went and did it, unfortunately, that meeting was a more private meeting, we were having it with members of the undocumented community, we wanted people to feel safe, so, there was not media there, there was not, it was not on public record, the only record we have of that meeting is a picture of him and me standing, holding a "Love Thy Neighbor" sign, so, yeah, we do, we, we would like to get these answers on public record, that's important, it's important for elected officials to answer constituent questions publicly on the record, so, as to why we haven't asked these, why we didn't ask these questions privately, that is part of that, in terms of budget, there are indirect costs to being part of 287G, like, like they said, yes, we are at the very sort of smallest level of being involved with 287G, just the, the jail level, however, to the immigrant community, to the undocumented community in Nuasis County, 287G means 287G, like, not, not everybody's an immigration lawyer, and 287G can mean just what we are doing, which is accelerating the jail process, but it can also mean really making a sheriff's department a full-on deportation force, and people don't necessarily know the difference, so, when, when the community hears that Nuasis County has a 287G agreement, that matters, and that has costs, that means that people aren't trusting of law enfor, of local law enforcement, that means that people are scared, and while those costs don't become apparent right away, like, the program has only been in effect for a month.
Judge, if you would like to enforce the three-minute public comment, it has been three minutes.
Okay, I'll let her go a couple of minutes.
Thank you, I think that we will see those costs very soon, it, there's a cost of public safety, there is a fiscal burden when there's, when those costs of public safety happen, and I think if it is such a small part, as the sheriff says, if it's so, so small, this 287G, this part of the 287G agreement that we're doing, why do it? If it's going to scare the community, if it's going to have indirect fiscal and indirect public safety costs, why do it? If it's so small, why, why even have that affiliated with our county? Because people will feel a lot safer, and there will be a lot more trust between the community and law enforcement if those three numbers in one letter are not affiliated with our county, and that's what I wanted to say, thank you.
Let me just comment, I appreciate, I appreciate the, and way in which you always come up and give in a non-threatening, non-offensive, non-accusatory type way, so, so thank you, because I, I appreciate those comments, and I, I know you guys met that year ago, was that, and I guess that wasn't the one where it got in the Caller Times, that was another meeting, because there was a meeting the Caller Times was at or something, and, and I guess, I thought that was y'all's meeting, so if not-
That was, I believe that was with Chief Markle.
Okay, because I thought there were some comments made at a public meeting or something, anyway, so I, I thought that y'all were at that meeting, so I appreciate you clearing that up, my, my only comment is, to, to expedite and to help you get more information quicker, certainly, we can have a public meeting anytime, but, all I was trying to say earlier was, the sheriff's very amenable to these meetings, and there's nothing wrong with also having, like, you, you met with Commissioner Mariz and Commissioner Gonzalez and had a private meeting, which is completely appropriate, we have people all the time that come and meet with us privately to, to, to have comments, and then if it needs to come out in the public, then that's, that's great too, and everything that we talk about, there's not really anything, any private meetings anymore, right? I mean, but, but we have constituents that come in and want to ask us about things and so forth and so on, so all I'm trying to say to you is, if you really want, like, quick information, call the sheriff, and just say, hey, can we come meet with you because we're hearing this, I'm just trying to open the dialogue to maybe, to maybe, like, die down some of this rhetoric and die down some of the mistrust, because maybe, maybe, if you guys had more than just a year ago, because a year goes a long time ago, maybe if you had, and I'm not trying to commit the sheriff to a regular scheduled meeting, but maybe if you met with him once a quarter, or met with his representatives once a quarter, or did something that maybe that would, you guys then could also go out and say, hey, you know, we had a meeting with sheriff, we don't agree with 287, I get that you don't agree with that, I understand that, it's the, it's the law, they opted in, I, my concern, my concern was, I didn't want to spend money on it, we're not spending money on it, that's a big deal, I don't, I don't, I don't want to step on law enforcement's ability to do their job, nor do I want to, it ever imply that they shouldn't follow the law, so I'm just saying, maybe, if you guys would regularly try to go meet with them, and ask for some of that information, and if you want to come back, and you've already said you're going to come to every meeting for, that, you know, and do your public comment, and you want to come, that's awesome, but, to me, if we're trying to really die, if we're really trying to solve the problem and dial back the rhetoric and not inflame it all the time, it, it might just be helpful if you went directly to the horse's mouth and got the thing, you don't have to, and we can do it this way whenever, but, but I just would think if you really want to get some good information, that might be a thing, and so that was what I was, was trying to suggest.
Rest, because we've, like, like as you said, we met with Commissioner Mariz, Commissioner Mariz has never told us anything, told us one thing, and then gone and done another thing.
I get it.
But the sheriff has.
But, and he might think, he might say that y'all have given information, I might say, I've heard things in here, you know, I've heard things from people on that microphone that wasn't exactly what it was, and I didn't just stop communicating with them, I didn't just say, okay, I might have called him out on it, I might, which you've already done, I, I might have said, hey, listen, I don't like this, you know, I might have jumped on someone, and, you know, Commissioner Gonzalez and I got into it the other day, and I shouldn't, we shouldn't have done, I shouldn't have done that, we shouldn't have that, but, we, you know, sometimes you call people out on it, but it doesn't mean I stopped communicating with Commissioner Gonzalez, I mean, I still love the guy, I think he's a great man, I mean, he does, he represents his precinct well, just because he and I have one fight, and I don't like what he said, or he don't like what I said, I would hope we would never stop the lines of communication simply for that, so that's all I'm saying is, okay, you don't like what he said a year ago, I get it, fair, but, that doesn't mean you should maybe just give up, you know, trying to talk to him, so I'm just saying-
And we're open to talking to him more, but I, I do want to address this real quick before my, uh, public comment is over, since you are my commissioner.
Sure.
You mentioned that it's not costing the county money, it, it, it will cost the county money, it's indirect costs, but 287G will cost the county money, and indirect costs in the way that, in, in the, the ways that we've talked about, and so, well, I know that you can't tell him how to do his job, I think if we're worried about the budget, as commissioners, y'all should be concerned about a program that is, as he said, very small, not doing much, but is a huge public relations issue, and is going to cost the county money in the long run, it's, and it, it, there's so many ways it could cost the county money, there's grants that the county could, might not get, because we're affiliated with 287G, there's nonprofits that might not want to work with us, because we're affiliated with 287G, there are a million ways that this could cost the county money and affect the budget, and so, if it's as small as he claims it is, we should not have the, the letters and the numbers 287G affiliated with Nuasis County, and that's the point we're taking.
And I respect that position, I just, like I said, and if you, if you ever find something that shows that it's costing, please let us know, because I, I'm, I'm very much interested in the cost of this, I, I really am.
I can send you a list of nonprofits who don't contract with, with counties that are affiliated with 287G, I can, I'll send you that list today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I, I just want to say this, if the sheriff said something one month and changed his mind the next, and I don't know that he did, we all do that, things change in our lives sometimes, one day, and we may have to change our decision, so if he had to change a decision, I'm sure there's a legitimate reason for it, and I, and I'm, I'm actually going to ask him that, so you're going to get your answer today.
Thank you, and I would like to just point out that he said, when, when he said that, he said it to a very vulnerable community, it was, we were, it was, we had gathered members of the undocumented community, and people there were, had to, they had a lot of courage showing up to that event, to show up to an event with the sheriff, to ask questions, people who were, you know, worried that they could be deported, and that they could be taken away from their children, who, you know, a lot of whom have children who are American citizens, so they, all, all these people showed up with incredible courage to ask these questions, and they were given answers that then, then next month, it was something different, so, to us, that just felt very disrespectful of the risk that those people took in showing up to that meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff Kalin, can you answer that?
Be happy to, number one, the most important thing in my life is my integrity, and that if I tell you something, I stand by it, when I attended the meeting with the coalition, and a room was filled with non-English speaking people, and I was there to address them, and what I addressed is, I will not be a part of a 287G program that goes into the colonias and does a sweep and starts arresting fathers and mothers for being in this country illegally, I will not participate in that, and you can take that to the bank, that's what I told them, when the 287G program was modified that it would work only in the jail When the 287G program was modified that it would work only in the jail to assist me in better identifying those people in which the federal government has a detainer on to be, having been in the country illegally, then yes, we did that. But I've never gone to the colonias. We don't go to the colonias. And we have never arrested an immigrant, an illegal entrant. I told them this, and I was, you know, remember, everything I said, I had to say in short sentences. It had to be translated. And then the translations back from the audience had to be given to me. So I think there's some things that might have got lost in this translation. But I still stand by that. We're not, unless the laws change, we're not going in there and be immigration officers. I got the 287G program in there, and it's no different than any other thing our jailers do. They're called upon to do a multiple number of different tasks that they weren't called upon to do last month, but now they're called upon to do today. So anyway, that's, that's, I hope that answers the question, Commissioner.
It does, and I appreciate you being transparent. I appreciate you clarifying what you said and also for following the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Anyone else? Make sure. Okay.
Judge, I'd like just to thank the sheriff for...
Thank you.
For clarifying this. You know, there's been a lot of concerns over this last year, and I think we probably should have gotten to this earlier to just, just dispel any other issues. But the fact that we're here now, that we're able to clarify, that helps a lot. I think there's, as Commissioner Chesney mentioned, I think there's an opportunity here to continue to work with this coalition and other groups, or our other immigration right groups here in the area, to dispel myths. And it doesn't have to be often, maybe once a year, or just as these issues come up. But this helps me better understand. I, you know, there are some concerns that were brought up about where these violations are and their rest. And I, I think you've done a good job in explaining, and, and you're a man of your word. I don't doubt that. I trust you in that you're saying that you are very conscious about your officers not profiling, that when they get there to the jails because they've broken the law. And once they're there, well then, we have questions about their, their status, okay. But I think that this needs to be a wake-up call for all of us, that, you know, when we have constituency that's upset, we need to meet with them and be proactive. We've had, we had a whole bunch of deputies out here earlier today because of comments of just ideas that we're pitching out there during our budget workshops. Has, nothing has been done yet, and yet they were here to let us know. So I think it's important for the community to also reach out to their elected officials. And hey, we all got to take our hits. If you're reading Facebook right now, we're the devil incarnate, just even talking about the idea of looking at that 1.75 or that 1.5 retirement. We really are. If you haven't, we are. I know you're, you're concerned about the hits that the sheriff took on Facebook on this issue, but we're taking those hits right now on the budget. If you haven't seen them, go look for them. That's part of being an elected official. But when, when we, you know, my final concern is, you know, when we have people come up here, we all get passionate. And I apologize to Commissioner Chesney for, for jumping on here. I just want to make sure that when someone's up here, yes, we need to correct them if they're, if they're wrong, but we need to also make sure that we, you know, give them their opportunity and just let them speak their piece. Sometimes it's not always true. And then that's our chance to correct them. But I felt that was unfair that we, we, that we jumped on a couple of people here. So that's just my, you know, just my final thoughts on this. But I think this was very productive. This may not be the end of it, but this, I think, gives us an idea to, to know where the sheriff is with this, and that him and his officers are, are committed to doing what's right, based on the jail side, not on anything else other than once they get into the jail. So that helps me better understand this, and I want to thank him for that.
Thank you very much, Sheriff. Thank you all for coming.
Sheriff, I want to say thank you for, for being here also. And you and I, you know, we talked about this before, and, you know, and I know you also are always doing a good job out in the field, but, you know, I apologize, you sounded different. Apologize to the group that was here for, you know, we sounded a little rude up here, but, you know, but I apologize to you guys. And, I mean, you guys are taxpayers too, just like anybody else that come before is a taxpayer. You know, I know we had a bunch of, your officers come up here today, you know, almost jumping at us for, for even thinking about the, the retirement, and I don't blame them. You know, I mean, just like I don't blame somebody else coming out here and being worried about other things. So I just want to say thank you for keeping us safe and keep on doing your work.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Auditor?
The first item is, Kristen, y'all put this on air. It was, wasn't for, for me, but...
Scott's actually going to address this.
What? Scott?
I've never done anything underneath the auditors before, so...
Reclassification of the year.
Yeah, the reclassification, that was a position I talked to y'all when I did my budget presentation. It was a beach foreman. That position's retired. That's really top-heavy. And so I'm asking y'all to reclassify it to a heavy equipment operator. It produces cost savings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Both same sign. Number two.
I'm, I'm asking y'all to approve a natural resource specialist position that I worked with Julie on. I'm crafting the job description to help me, it's on, it's grant-funded for three years only, no cost to the budget. And that position's going to help me greatly with all the environmental compliance issues I have, and also on my grants and grant reporting in the department.
Grant funding for three years?
For three years. And then it goes away.
No cost to the budget.
No cost.
Love to hear that.
When the money goes away, the position...
Position goes away. And unless I was find some more grant money, and I'd come back to you. Grant money's grant money. You know I know how to get that.
So moved.
Second.
Questions here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both.
Man.
Thank you. Number three.
Get in.
Julie.
I think this needs to be tabled based on the advisory you got, right? Because...
Yes, but I wanted to discuss it.
Okay.
It does, the way it was written is to have the civil service manual waived. Of course, that would be decided upon by the civil service commission. However, I will be bringing it before the civil service commission because all of the law enforcement employees that would be affected fall under civil service.
Just for...
Do you want to discuss how...
Yeah, let me just tell you where it came from. The court, for the court certification, it was an issue brought to my attention that because of all the overtime and the vacancies, it's not, the sheriff's officers, folks have not been able to take a lot of their vacation, and we're only allow at the county a certain amount of vacation to roll over. And so what they had asked me to consider and put on the agenda for your consideration was that we, on a one-time basis, waive that. So apparently, we can't because it's a civil service rule. And so I do think it's very important to do, and I think it's something that we, we should help these sheriffs folks do because they just can't take their vacation because we have so many vacancies. And so it's, it's a tough situation. So that being said, certainly I don't...
I think you can make a, you can take action, but the action would only be a recommendation to the civil service commission.
Okay. Well, then, that would be my motion, that the recommendation to the civil service commission be that we waive this particular policy for this particular year to allow them to roll over.
Two hundred and forty hours.
You know, my commissioner, I think that, I think, just for the record, to include Edwards also to be extended. I don't know, he's not civil service?
No, no, this is just, this was just a request from the sheriff. This is just from the sheriff, just the sheriff's department officers. This was what my, this was what was posted today.
Is that only for the hurricane? Is this for overtime?
No.
The hurricane issue was brought about last year, and that was addressed then, and that's already behind us.
We did that one.
Commissioner Chesney asked that this one be put on there for the overtime that there, the law enforcement employees are working due to the fact of their vacancies.
And so they're not being able to take their vacation, and vacation, only so many hours roll over each year?
Two hundred and forty.
Two hundred and forty.
Right, so this will allow more to roll over.
This will allow them to carry over that two forty and whatever else they have.
Right.
And not lose it. Because on September thirtieth, it resets to two hundred and forty hours only.
Can I ask something?
Yes, ma'am.
To me, this is a big, there's a bigger issue here. Because if we've got these guys that are not being able to take their vacation, that issue needs to be addressed because that has got to be low morale. They're not spending time with their families. That, to me, would affect their jobs. So we've got to figure out why we're not hiring. And where are the billboards? I thought there were going to be billboards up for hiring. Where are the billboards advertising? And Judge, I just think it's an issue that's got to be addressed because they can't keep going like that.
Well, and I don't disagree with you, Commissioner, but there are a number of vacancies in the jail. There are a number of vacancies in public works. There are a number of vacancies in almost every department we have. And while hiring county clerk in elections, the sheriff has a program to advertise for people, and really, it's his responsibility to fill those vacancies. It's his responsibility.
We've been testing more frequently. We've gone to a bi-weekly testing period opposed to a monthly that we used to do.
Yeah.
So we are assisting with the sheriff's department to recruit as best as we can. And our numbers are going down on the vacancies.
They are. They're, we have...
They're making progress.
About twenty.
I saw it in the newspaper.
Yeah, about twenty. So anyway, they're, they're working it, Carolyn. It's, it's sheriff's call.
But, but, can you just deny vacation though? If they want to take a vacation, or are they just so loyal that they're all...
It's up to the managers to...
Really?
Yes.
It's their discretion to allow that vacation time and to grant it.
And if they just don't have, and if they don't have any people to fill the spots...
You can't keep living like that with your family. That's wrong.
I agree, and that's why we've got to get the vacancies filled. But that, this is a stopgap proposal to help them this year, which I think will go a long way in, in, in their morale because they'll get a bunch of vacation that they thought they were going to lose back.
Sure. I get that.
So it's, it's not a perfect situation, but it, I, I hope, I think it will help them.
I'm not going to punch the tar baby here, but we have a lot of county employees right now who are in the exact same position.
But these are, Judge, I don't, I don't...
No, no, I'm just, I say I'm not going to punch the tar baby.
Well, you did.
But, but, but we're not going to bring that up because this is...
You're okay. Because I, I'm going to, not going to have...
It's not on the agenda.
I got, that's right.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
We will recommend to the civil service commission for law enforcement only.
Law enforcement only. That's, that's the agenda.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number four. Budget change order.
Okay, we have the budget change order for this week, year seventeen eighteen, budget change order number twenty. There's several departments, so I'll go through a few of them. The county clerk is, some needing additional check stock that we've had. We've had some higher numbers, they're issuing some checks, and this is planned in, in the future, but sometimes we, we run into areas where we need some additional cost, so we're doing that. The tax assessors have been, have to travel back and forth for legislative purposes to Austin, so his, he needs additional travel, and he's moving that from his repair and maintenance of equipment, which has been down a little bit. The three forty sevens have to do some more overtime because of the, the areas they're, they're working with on the balances. Constable Precinct One had requested five thousand for repair and maintenance of, of some equipment. We, talking with him, reduced that to three thousand because we thought five thousand was, was too high. So we, we reduced that down for that because they are, some of the vehicles are getting several aged, so we decide that the funds were needed for there. And as well for emergency management, they're, they're doing a little bit of travel back and forth for several hurricane conferences that we have, other emergency-related expenses, so their travel balances need to be adjusted a little bit as well, a little more office supplies. Those are the transfers that we, we are submitting for you today. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Best submit this for your approval.
Any discussion, you better? You hear a motion?
I'm moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next...
Just, just a clarification, and Dale brought it up as well, because I, I missed it. But in the last one involving the sheriff's office, I, I thought we heard law enforcement, which could be not just sheriff. So the clarification is sheriff only, the agenda item, sheriff only for number three.
That was, I, I, I think when, when, when they asked me, they, they specifically talked about the vacancies in the sheriff's office causing this. So I'm not saying that we, if someone comes back and shows me that that's a problem in other law enforcement officers, that I wouldn't make the same recommendation, but I have not been told that's a problem in the other law enforcement parts of our county, just in the jail and the sheriff's office.
I think right now, just the sheriff department.
Yeah, I mean, so that, that's what I put on, but...
Okay, so it's the sheriff, because the action item was law enforcement?
Law enforcement.
So can you amend it?
Amended.
Somebody bring it back and amend that.
Hold on. I mean, I wish Joe Gonzalez was still here, because he's the one who brought it to me.
Well, let me ask, I mean, just kind of, do we, Dale, do we know that other law, like constables, do they work a lot overtime too? I mean...
The constables don't, don't work that much overtime, no.
I think they get, I think they're taking their vacation time.
Yeah, it was just the sheriff's office.
They are taking, most constables taking their vacation. It's the patrol and the jail.
I would say just the sheriff's department.
Just amend it.
Yep. You want to amend your motion?
I'll amend, yes. Whatever the court wants to do. Yes.
Reinstate and reopen it and amend?
Remand the motion. Remend the motion.
What she says.
To include just the sheriff's department.
Okay.
But all the sheriff's department.
A second on that?
Take a vote?
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm in my motion as suggested by the county attorney, and I don't know who seconded me.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judge, we just went back to that, that item, yeah, because the, the action was law enforcement, and we wanted to make sure that it was just sheriffs. So they did correct it. It's sheriff's only.
All right, so it would be just sheriff's office only.
Yeah.
Okay. Aye, thank you. All right, good.
The next item is the monthly financial report. It's getting kind of late, I'll go through it in, in depth. There are a few items that we want to touch base before. It's page four, which we always tell you where we are as of June. For June, on the general fund, we have about forty-eight million dollars worth of assets, ten million dollars worth of liability, and thirty-eight million dollars worth of fund balances. We know we spend about nine to ten million dollars a month, so that's where you'll know where you get down to our fund balance in four months from this, is where we'll get down to where we're projecting at the eighteen, as, as we're doing for now. Page six and seven goes over our revenue collections for, for the period. They're showing the, the balance we collect for all the revenue sources of the, of the down to where we're projecting at the eighteen, as we're doing for now. Page six and seven goes over our revenue collections for, for the period, showing the balance we collect for all the revenue sources of the, of the county, and as well the expenses to show you how we increase or decreases in the fund balance. On eight and nine, just show you some theoretically graphs of where we are on, on position-wise for our fund balance, as well as the expense to revenue functions, and it's a normal trend that we've, we've normally see throughout, throughout the year. The good news is on page ten, is our group health. Our group health has been seeing some very promising results, our, our revenue has been exceeding our expenses six of the eight, eight months. So our fund balance has gone up over a million five, a million six on, on that, so we're at a million eight thousand, million eight hundred thousand dollars, which is very promising, because the last three or four years, we've always been in a negative position, so that's very promising that we're doing something correct on our, our health insurance at this time. And as you see on, on the next page, on page twelve, the changes in there, you'll see that the revenues have been exceeding our, our expenses except for a few months, and May was, was a, a month was a little bit higher, and we kind of expected some of that, those numbers to come in. The rest of the balances are, are just our budget numbers for our revenue and expense, nothing, no ones are really out of, out of sequence, there's a few over-budget numbers, but those are because we pay the rent all, all of a sudden for some of the departments. Our, our legal aid services, we pay all twenty-five thousand dollars at once, so we, we know they're always going to be below budget until the end of the year, so there are none that are real concerning, that, that need to follow. The sheriff is a little bit below, but again, we had to pay the Metro Comm all at once, so that's why their, their values is, is a little bit low. The rest of the balances are there, as we've done in the past, we've included your history for your, your P-card balances on page one oh one, one oh two, is where we saw our procurement cards. Page one oh three is where we show the untimely purchase orders, which means the purchase orders were done before the, receiving the invoice, and there's, are several, we're trying to continue to work with them, so we don't have this continuing error that we have, that we've gotten written up every year with our management letters, and we keep working on them. Then we go through the process of how much we've spent for each of the, the functions, and then we have a year-to-date total, and just so you know, our year-to-date total on the very back page, for the P-cards that we've gone through year-to-date on one seventy-nine, our P-cards has, have, have been three point, three million sixty-four thousand total in expenses for all nine months that we're coming through, so that's where we, about nine, three or four, five hundred thousand dollars every year. And our largest contributor is some of our Rico, which is our copy machines, and some of the other entries that we have, the, the information is there, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, but I submit the monthly financial report for your consideration.
Questions, the auditor? Please, anybody? I need a motion to accept.
I'm moved.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, all in favor? Aye, both same sign. We're going to go into executive session.
Judge, before you, before you go on, can we go back to four A seven? Can you open that up? Because I want to make sure that it's on the record correctly, it's on the Craigel case, four A seven.
Four, motion to reopen? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, what do you want?
The motion is for the court to accept or approve the settlement accepting the award of thirteen, fifteen thousand to Nuasis County.
So moved. All right, we have a motion, I'll second that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. All right, now we'll go back to.
Thank you.
Thank you, we'll go back to item five, executive session, we're going to table five A, if you read the paper this morning, you know why. If you didn't read the paper, we've given, I have given the final deal to five o'clock tomorrow, Friday, Friday, five o'clock Friday. I'll be working with the county attorney and Kristen and Dale, we have a workshop scheduled for Monday. We may have to have a regular agenda item on Monday, so we can convene the court in regular session, deal with this item in, on Monday, and then go back to workshop, if you'll help me do that, please. So I'd like to move that we table five A at this time, please.
I'm moved.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you very much, all in favor? Aye, both same sign, thank you. Now, court can go into executive session at any time, under authority of government code, Vernon's Texas Code, sections five five one oh seven, one oh seven two, oh seven three, oh seven four, oh seven four five, oh seven six, oh eight six, oh eight seven.